To make a motion to approve them?
I'll second.
Thank you. And all of those in favor? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, then we will move on to communications. And we had, we all got in our packet from Matt Raska, the homeowner's handbook to building an ADU. That's an example. And I think that was the only thing we had. So next, we have council and committee reports.
And I can just give you that one quickly. Council did amend your recommendation to that annexed land be brought into the village as RB. They amended that to RC. So it will receive a second reading, probably be passed into law on May 15th. And then, all of the other recommendations that you had made and their tangential effects were all written as first reads. So the change to business district to just permit dwellings on the upper floor, permit residential and industrial as a conditional use, and then changing the various tables to allow that, added a definition for AD construction and a definition for utility review. Council also passed a resolution approving the Home Inc. preliminary PUD as you recommended. And they moved to approve consideration of PUD on less than five acres, which leads us to tonight.
Any other committee reports? Then we'll go on to, are there any citizens' comments for anything that is not going to be, have a public hearing? And when you do come forward, if you'll state your name, and then go ahead.
Hi, I'm John Hemfling. I live in the village. So I'm wondering if there was a misunderstanding regarding the discussion that I participated in last month? Or maybe I misunderstood the upshot of Planning Commission's decision? But my sense was that when Planning Commission decided to recommend allowing dwellings in buildings with non-residential uses on the ground floor, that that meant that, conditionally, that that meant that the conditional use would be allowed in one-story buildings? Also, not just multi-story buildings? Is that Planning Commission's sense?
For a one-story building?
I mean, it's really, we took out the separation of floors. So it's now just become allowing residential and industrial.
Okay. I just, I saw in-
As a conditional.
The village, in the village council's packet for their previous meeting, a change to the specific requirements that it seems like would apply to those dwellings in the industrial district, that would require that separation of residential from non-residential to be on separate floors?
We, no, we amended it so we had both. It's kind of like, this is allowed, and then there's the other choice. So no, it's, in B1, B2, it's a permitted use, but it's only residential on the upper floors with non-retail on the ground floor. In industrial, it's wherever. It's, but it's a conditional use, so that we can evaluate things like toxic fumes and things like that.
Yes, but the specific requirement specifies that, you know, dwellings will not be on floors that contain non-residential uses, including storage?
Right. So if you're going to have a non-residential on one floor, you're, what, I'm not sure what you're asking. We were saying you could do it anywhere.
Logically, if the non-residential, the building must have non-residential uses in order for you to put a dwelling in it, and in the industrial district. If the non-residential use must be on a separate floor from the residential use, then the building must have more than one floor.
That's true.
So therefore, the building must be multi-floor.
I mean, yeah, I mean- In the same, on the same floor.
Right.
So, yeah, so then, so then you can't have them in one-story buildings.
You can have a three-story building and have residential on the top two floors, but you cannot have residential and industrial in a one-story building in a residential district. Correct.
In a industrial district.
Okay, because I thought that was the thing that Carmen wanted, and that everyone agreed to, to having it on-
If you have industrial uses on the second floor, if it's storage only, you can have a dwelling on the first floor.
Yeah, yeah. We were just saying you can't have them both on the same floor. And you can't have storage on the same floor.
But, yeah, okay, cool. So, I mean, 99 times out of 100, if you have a multi-story building that contains residential and non-residential on separate floors, the non-residential is going to be on the ground floor. So in a sense, there was, the change was no change at all.
Susan Staffs made the point, however, that industrial needs to be prioritized in industrial districts. And that was why that was not changed.
Yes, and I guess, yeah, and then I also had the concern that I'm, by basically requiring this separation, in theory, it could cause a restriction for the industrial use, because if you had a residential use on, you know, on one floor, and then, you know, a vacancy, let's say you had two sections, you know, got residential here, residential here, and a vacancy opens up in one of them, you couldn't put industrial in there, even if you were like, oh, yeah, we've got a better industrial tenant. Anyway.
I'm not on the same floor, but they could be on a different floor. If the use is not toxic fumes or things like that, that's why they'd have to come before the Planning Commission.
Okay.
I think I, actually, you made me think of something, because I actually rented a house once from someone who lived in a setting like this. And the scenario was, this individual had a warehouse, like a four-story warehouse, okay? And they had carved out, they had carved out an apartment on one floor, but was surrounded, and the rest of the floor was warehouse. So it's conceivable that you might want something on the same floor.
Well, the chances of it happening, we can always amend the code at another point. But we're kind of spending a lot of time here on that one.
That was, I shouldn't waste any more of your time. Thank you, guys.
I don't think so. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments? Okay, then we are going to go ahead to our public hearings, looking at the preliminary plan application for PUD.
So, yeah, so I'm going to do this as two separate reports, which I have done in the packet. So as you're aware, going back in history a little bit, 2017, 2018, the previous owner of Millworks came in and did a preliminary PUD to have some various underlying uses, and then never finalized it with a final plan. And then, when it was purchased by APR Investments, Allison Moody, I met with her, and she did want to go forward and finalize the PUD. What's interesting about this is that in the, in the 2010 and the 2020 Comprehensive Land Use Plan, it discussed the fact that, you know, the downtown is very limited in its space for the size of the population that we have. And we understand that we don't want to hurt our core of the downtown. Both the 2010, both the 2020 said, if you were going to expand, you could expand north up to Millworks. What staff thought was, the PUD process is, makes it as difficult as the PUD process is, it's still a little bit easier, because we're not forcing residential properties to rezone into Business One, if we're bringing it down from Long Railroad Street, for example. So what these, these two PUD applications are for is a use for the uses that they want. And so, let me just start with, I'm going to start with 108 Cliff.
That's the first one.
That's, I've, I've got 144 on here, but, yeah, I want to start with 108 Cliff. So as Planning Commission's aware, Brian Drew, who's here tonight, came before Planning Commission a while back, a couple of years ago, for the approval for the lumber company market eatery. One of the things that the solicitor had told us is if we're going to do this with the, with the PUD zoning, that we'd need to have both properties come in, and that would complete it. We've got Millworks, and we need both Bushworks and the lumber company to come in together.
On our agenda, we actually have, have the Bushes first.
Yeah, I'm just, they're all together, they kind of submitted their stuff together. But I'm just going with the, what I think is the less complicated one first.
On Cliff Street first?
Yeah. What we're going to do, yeah, I'm going to do 108 Cliff.
Okay.
Yeah. So anyway, as I was saying, it was already approved for the market eatery. They're going to have kitchens in there and an outdoor area for, along the bike path for bicyclists and trail walkers to be able to come into their facility. There'll be public restrooms in there. This has already been approved. What, the 108 Cliff Street PUD application will enable them to do is to be able to have some retail kiosks, where they can't right now. Because the requirement under I-1 is that you have to have, the goods have to be manufactured on-site, and then you can have a 30%, area for retail. And that's just not going to work for some of the downtown businesses that might want to have a kiosk there. And then, the only other thing might be like a special event. So when I go through the 108 Cliff Street, under the qualifying conditions for recognizable benefit, staff agrees with the applicant that there are four recognizable benefits, 2, 3, 6, and 8. 2 being, it'll complement the character of the surrounding area. But we're changing these uses, it's going to complement Millworks, the bike path, Bushworks, and what's happening further down Railroad Street. And then, for number 3, which is within a smaller area, the PUD district can be achieved. It, that was already approved by council to move forward on, on a site that's less than five acres. And then, number 6, which is... Where's that other one? 6 and 8, 6... Oh, wait, oh, I'm so sorry, I'm looking at the wrong stuff here. Yeah, okay, 2, 3, 6, and 8. Let me go back. Complementary mix of land uses or housing types, it's going to, this was a storage facility, basically. Prior to that, it was a lumber company. And now, it's going to be a multi-tenant complex. Number 3, connectivity of open space with newer existing adjacent greenway or trail corridors. There is little open space on the property. Staff would request a waiver of the open space requirement, which you can do under modification of requirements. But they're going to create a, Millworks already created a walking path that is between the Y.S. Brewery and the lumber company eatery site. And then, what the lumber company eatery is going to do is they're going to take what originally in their plan, it was going to be an outdoor patio, it's now going to be an enclosed four-season patio. And then, there'll be park benches and bicycle racks in the public right-of-way along the bike path, which has been, there's been an agreement already signed and crafted with the owners and the village. So we're all set on that. Number 6, improvements to public streets or other public facilities. I just brought that thing about how they're improving that area for the, for the bike trail. And then, removal or renovation of blighted buildings. They removed the lumberwood storage area, which was along the west side of their property. They also demoed an accessory structure, it was a garage on the property. And then, they have an outdoor dry, cold storage area that was attached to the building that was removed, but it is going to be replaced. And so, it's staff's opinion that four of the reasons stated meets the criteria, because you only need to meet three. So that's under, if anybody has any questions for that, otherwise, I'll keep moving on.
I have a question. Is there going to be a opening from the bike path that you can bring a bike through? Because I was riding my bike there, I had a meeting on the other day, Monday. And I saw the path that you could walk, where you couldn't really take your bike up that.
Right.
It was like steps. And so, I had to go all the way to the end and come in, and it wasn't really an official opening.
Yeah.
And I wonder if, are they going to do something that, because I can see people from the bike path wanting to ride their bikes and-
Going up, on the other PUD, they are going to try to create a, they are planning to create a pedestrian bicycle pathway to their property.
Okay.
This property, John Dobney, who is-
And which, which, which-
144 Cliff, but 108 Cliff is what we're really focusing on. For 108 Cliff Street, the head of Green County Park and Rec, John Dobney, said that there, he just wanted to make sure, right now, there's like a little gap in the fencing. And we've got, and Public Works is aware of it, too. They're going to do something, because what they don't want is for a car to just drive right onto the bike path, or vice versa. So they're going to clean all that up. And I think that Brian probably can answer that one at the end, a little bit more.
Weren't they going to connect the two parking lots?
The parking lot from 108 Cliff and 144 Cliff?
No, no, from 108 Cliff into the parking lot for the Millworks.
I think right now, they're just keeping it a pedestrian way, so no. As far as driving cars through, that's not in their plans.
Okay.
Yeah.
My understanding, you know, along the lines of her comments, that area between the two buildings, that where there's a little path going up, that that was like temporary? That at, once things really happen, it'll be a more robust, you know, well, you need stairs, stairs, a little steep, you know?
And we can address that when he talks, okay?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay, so moving on. For B, the size, council already approved the size with a motion to explore this on less than five acres at their meeting on May 1st. Rezoning the area to PUD isn't going to result in a significant adverse effect. There have already been I-1 uses at this site. And from my understanding, I mean, I've lived here a long time, but I don't remember this, that there used to be a lot of semis going through that area with the lumber company deliveries and things like that. And the same thing even with Bushworks, which I'll get into at that time. And then, the purpose of the, can be achieved within a smaller area, yes. And it's not, it's going to allow for a wide variety of uses that I think with this section of the community and the bike trail is, is going to be very unique. For utilities, the Public Works Director doesn't have any issues with that. That's already been explored. Again, this is consistent with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan to extend the central district north. And then, F, pedestrian accommodation, I already mentioned that, that the patio area is going to be now four-season. And in front of that, in the public right-of-way, will be the benches and bike racks for trail users. Architecture, the only building that they're going to do is rebuilding that 1,800-square-foot cold, dry storage area on the west side of the building. There's no other plans for construction besides that and the four-season patio. And then, we expect that a lot of the users of this facility are going to park in, in public parking lots, Railroad Street. They'll park at John Bryan Center. They'll come in off the bike trail. So, you know, it's good that we're having a lot of accommodations for bike, bike racks and things like that in this area. So, under the PUD requirements, the only thing that I saw that in, you know, they're not asking for a density bonus, they're not asking for really anything special, because this isn't like a residential subdivision PUD. So the only thing is that the, they're not going to meet the open space requirement. There's just the, there's not a lot of green space there right now. What is there now will become the area for the four-season patio. So if you're going to approve this tonight, staff does ask that you make a motion to waive that open space requirement.
Okay.
And as far as the conditions for approval, this, this PUD is specific uses to complement the central business district while still maintaining the existing light industrial uses. Other than the four-season patio and the cold storage addition, there are no plans for the construction of any other building. Staff is recommending approval of this preliminary PUD rezoning.
Any questions for Denise at this point? If not, then, Brian, did you want to come up and talk? And just introduce yourself and say whatever you are interested in?
Brian Drew, Massey's Great Ventures. I don't have anything necessarily prepared to say. But I do want to answer any questions that you have, or clarify anything that you needed to know.
Go ahead.
So the, you were talking about four-season patio, what, do, that's going to be on the bike path side?
Correct.
And you don't have a drawing or anything of what that's going to look like?
We don't have a rendering of that yet, no.
Okay, is it, I mean, can you describe what you're thinking?
I think of like a white tent, like, you know, window-ish sort of setup, where if it's really cold out, there can be siding, and we can have heaters in there. Where it could be rolled up and opened up, or even partially torn down during nice days of summer.
With a permanent roof, or?
Most likely.
Yeah.
We're still in sort of design considerations there. This was, this was a change that we made to create more seasonal seating because of a larger design change we made inside the structure.
And did you want to ask about the walkway or something?
Yeah, yeah, and actually, a couple bicycle-related ones, which is, happens to be my focus. But what I want to emphasize is, much of the stuff that I mentioned, it's more of a request, because right now, in our zoning code, we don't actually have various requirements for bike parking and all that stuff, although I'm hoping that that's something that can change later in the year. I've talked to Denise about it, and-
You know, we do have in the code, you can use bike parking to replace parking spaces.
Right, right.
We do have that.
But recently, I'm going off on a little tangent, but recently discovered formal guidelines and stuff having to do with bike parking and all that, that we want to try to figure out what's a logical, simple way to add into the code. But anyway, with that said, so, yeah, so my understanding, my previous understanding is it'll be a more robust walkway between the buildings once you get into full construction, and-
Yeah, between Millworks and 108 Cliff, there's a sort of what Allison built. I don't, Millworks, I don't know if that's necessarily temporary, but we are totally prepared to create a more paved area that connects the two properties to one another. You had brought up a good point, Stephen, about traffic going through there. We're also open to working with Millworks to have a reciprocal parking agreement and potentially having flow there. We don't have anything established with them just yet, so that may primarily just be a place for our deliveries and parking. But we're, yeah, we're absolutely open to collaborating to make the, the space between the two properties.
Right, yeah, now, that's, one of my concerns is that it's, that actually also, that if, not riding, that you could, you know, walk a bike up through there safely between those two buildings. But that'll probably be part of, once you really do your construction. The other thing, I'm just wondering if, so, it sounds like there's already been some agreement having to do with bike parking, bike racks, and all that stuff.
Yes.
I'm just wondering, what type of bike racks are you looking at?
So, we have a design for that, and I could share that with you. And I don't know what the actual, I don't know exactly what the name of these types of parking spaces are. They go, they're in the ground, I believe, and-
Inverted U, maybe?
Perhaps, yeah.
Okay.
I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't, I know we have plans and a rendering of what that should look like, I think I can-
Yeah, I mean, you guys could probably get together on the side.
Yeah, no, I, right, that would-
It's not really a requirement.
I don't know a whole lot about bike parking, but I'd be absolutely happy to hear it.
Once again, since it's not actually a formal requirement yet, I would be happy to get together outside of this to just discuss it a little bit.
Great, great. Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Then, why don't we go ahead and open up the public hearing? Would anybody like to come forward and say anything? If not, then we will close the public hearing. So, we need to, I guess, basically, accept the staff recommendation that, and let me find the page that I had. The recognizable benefits, do we all agree that yes? We agree with what the staff said, that it was 2, 3, 6, and 8? We're all in agreement? Okay. And then, then I think the other one was the 125406, which was page 14, I believe. And just, the staff said, we're going along with what they said, that with the, meets all the general standards. Okay? If we're all in agreement with that, then we need to first have a motion that will recommend rezoning this to a PUD. Would somebody like to make that motion?
I can make the motion. A motion, so I recommend rezoning, make a motion to recommend rezoning to a PUD.
I'll second that.
Great. Greene?
Yes.
Zeremsky?
Yes.
Osterholm?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, the second motion, I will go ahead and make it, that we're approving this with the modification of the preliminary plan, including a waiver, well, including all the relevant conditions, and a waiver of the open space requirement.
I'll second that.
Is that this one?
Yeah.
Okay, so, just, let's straighten this out a second. So if you, if you want to go ahead and move to approve waiving the open space requirement, let's just, let's do that separately.
Separate it. Which they just did, right?
Yes.
I'm sorry, who's seconded?
Yeah, who's seconded?
I did.
Scott.
Thank you, Zeremsky. Are you voting, or you don't actually have to?
Yes, yeah.
I mean, you actually don't have to vote on each of the motions, we always have done it. It's a little cleaner, but you're looking at-
Why don't we go ahead and vote, everyone vote on it, so we have it?
Mine, so I just, yeah, okay.
Okay. Zeremsky?
Yes.
Osterholm?
Yes.
Greene?
Yes.
Staus? Yes. Thank you. Okay.
So we're going to need a third motion, right? To amend the-
Well, no, because, it's amended in front of you, so-
Okay, so I'll just explain it to them, so it's on the record. So in, in their exhibit, they said excluding automobile sales. I think in Allison's, it was excluding automobile uses. Anyway, the Exhibit C, that both, all three properties have, did have automobile sales in there. And it wasn't, Stephen caught it. So, in the case of Millworks, because it's already passed, if anything, in the future, it's a conditional use requirement anyway. It can be denied by Planning Commission if somebody wants to try to have a car dealership or something like that. If, if, if it's, oh, I lost my train, I thought that-
So this is in the sheet that-
Yeah, so it's in the sheet, we're removing auto sales from either of these places, okay?
So it's on, it's Exhibit C, and it's-
Page 5.
Yeah, page 5.
And it's got the official line drawn through it.
Yes, yes.
Right, yeah. Which we'll fix for, before we send it to council.
Okay. So I think that takes care of then all of our motions for that, right? Correct? Okay. Then we are ready then now to look at the PUD for John and Elizabeth Bush.
Okay, this is the same uses. John and Elizabeth Bush recently are changing the uses up a little bit. I think that they thought industrial was probably the most intense use you could have near a neighborhood, not realizing that, you know, zoning requires that you have certain underlying things. So, we met with them because they were getting ready to allow some other types of uses, and those uses aren't allowed in I-1. So, we met with them also about the preliminary PUD, and they're... We're interested in doing the exact same thing. So it'd be the underlying zoning of I-1 and then the specific uses in B-2 excluding automobile sales. Anyway, so let me move through this one and say that 1245 or 2 qualifying conditions. They have this... They have submitted their summary of intent, and they also, as recognizable benefits, believe they have 3, and staff does agree with that. And those are 2, 5, and 8. 2 being that they... The uses will complement the character of the surrounding area, and staff agrees it shouldn't have a negative effect on the surrounding area, but should complement it with the Millworks PUD at the rear of this property and the future opening of the lumber company market eatery. Also, 5, number 5 is... Am I doing the same darn thing I did before, didn't I? Complimentary mix of land... Why am I doing that? Complimentary... I'm going into the other thing, never mind, sorry. Page 3.
What page are you on?
Page 3. A complimentary mix of land uses or housing types. Existing complex has transitioned from primarily industrial uses, where they did heavy metal and welding fabrication in a commercial complex. Now it's going to be more professional offices, they'll have martial art and fitness classes, there is furniture making and repair already in there, they're wanting to have an art studio, a yoga, and a massage venue. So that's very much scaled down from what the industrial uses that were there before. The fifth, number 5, was preservation of small-town appeal. They... John and Elizabeth have done an extensive cleanup of the property to make it more aesthetically appealing and for the safe movement of pedestrians and bicycles. And then, number 7, there's 2 parcels on this property. All of the buildings will be for light industrial and business operations, and so that falls under coordinated development of multiple small parcels.
Okay, so they actually...
You added one.
So you've added one. 7.
Oh, okay, sorry.
And that's okay, you're going to add...
They had 2, 5, and 8, and then...
And you're adding 7.
Yeah, and then 8, removal or renovation of blighted buildings. I think you can see from the GIS aerial how much has already been cleaned up.
Yes.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay, so, it's staff's opinion that the requirement for recognizable benefit is met. Moving on, size, as same with the other one, there was no issue with council on moving forward with this on less than 5 acres. Staff also agrees that the rezoning shouldn't result in a significant adverse effect on the nearby properties. The proposed uses that they are intending are less intense than the industrial that they've had in the past, so that should be complimentary to the surrounding area. Also, this can be... What the uses that they're wanting to do can be done within this acreage that they have. They also... I mean, they've been there, and I think if you saw the summary of intent or history, they've been here for decades.
Yes.
And said that, and told me, which I don't remember this, that they actually had a... They would come in through Millworks and with their semis and then go out onto Cliff and railroad strength. Big semi trucks, I don't think you see that as much anymore. So, hopefully. Capacities for utilities are there. It also meets the comprehensive land use plan vision. And they are going to put in, under pedestrian accommodations, they're going to put in a new pedestrian access from the bike trail. Well, what they're going to do, that's already been there, the Bushes are preparing their site, which is to the east of their... Of the main building at the front. They're going to have a little pedestrian bicycle pathway there to go back into those other buildings.
So, is that from the bike path or from the other direction?
From Cliff Street.
It's from Cliff Street, yeah.
Okay, okay.
So, eventually, technically, well, people from the bike path should be able to go right all the way, once it's all finished.
Okay, because the bike path has that big wooden wall fence.
Right, right.
And so, is something going to be done about that?
So, where the little spacer is now for that wall, that's going to stay a fence, and where the open area is going to be is where their property... They're going to have steps. The 108 Cliff is going to have steps leading up into their building. Those steps and that area there will enable people to also go to the other.
Great.
Yeah. So, traffic, they're not planning on building any new buildings. Traffic can enter the site only by using Cliff Street entrance. And then, under 125403, PUD requirements, minimum lot size were fine. Staff felt they met all of the requirements. They actually met the green space requirement, too. And staff was... Took that in half of what they could have done because there is a lot of green space area along the western side of that, but they are also going to want to have some area for parking spaces. But they could still do both. And they're not asking for any deviations from the minimum requirements. Under conditions, every... The PUD is for specific uses, as I mentioned before. They want to maintain the existing light industrial uses because they do have furniture making, antique renovations on the property, and the other uses are more central business district type of uses.
So that was 125406 that you were just talking about?
Right.
That they meet the review standards?
Yes, they do. And then, I think that pretty much sums that up. The review standards, that's just for your benefit, but staff feels that they have met all the qualifying conditions and recognizable benefits, and recommends that you approve this PUD for these underlying uses.
Any questions for Denise at this point? Okay. One of the Bushes went to come and say something? You don't have to, but... Or to see if we have any questions?
Go ahead.
We'd love to hear from you.
Well, basically, we're looking for this change to have the buildings...
Say your name and...
I'm John Bush. Here with my wife, Eliza. And basically, we're looking for this so that we can have the buildings more meet the demand of the community for what's needed in the community. And to get them fully occupied, so we have the funds to get them looking pretty and help enhance the neighborhood. We already did the front towards Cliff Street, and now we want to work around now the sideshow from Cliff Street from the lumber company and get those fixed up and...
So for the parking, the access into that lot is on the... It's on from Cliff Street and it goes in on the, would be the west side of that building, and then it kind of snakes around in there?
Yes. And what we want to do is on the east side is have that be access also, so no longer backing on the Cliff Street, and that would also share the bicycle and pedestrian entrance.
So an entrance from the parking lot of the eatery or just the...
No, from Cliff Street there. And it's kind of from Cliff Street and the eatery because there's really not enough room for a driveway there between the building and Brian's property line, and he said it'd be fine to encroach a little bit to make that happen, so. And I think, having spent 45 years backing on the Cliff Street, I'll be happy not to do that anymore. And then, any questions?
Well, I just wanted to say, if you can add it, that we have 20 to 25 parking spots on Bushworth's property.
Yeah, we do have quite a bit of parking.
Why don't you go ahead and reveal? Or do you want to come up and say that? Because we want the folks at home to be able to hear you. And just tell us your name when you come up, too, please.
Hi, I'm Eliza Bush. I just wanted to add that we have 20 to... Depending on how you divide it up, and they're not marked out, but 20 to 25 parking spots on Bushworth's property, or now, actually, it's BushCo. And that, at this point, the people we're serving are all people that live in Yellow Springs. So, and that was the way it was before. They've all been local, so.
Great.
I almost see it as a business incubator, to tell you the truth. That's all I wanted to add.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Thank you.
What I wanted to just, you know, request, similar to my comments earlier, especially since you're specifically having some sort of bike access. I can visualize what you're talking about on the east side of the building coming into Cliff. I don't exactly understand the other potential path between the other buildings from the bike path, but nonetheless, the fact that you're having bicycle access and you have an area designated for parking, that you have some sort of bike parking.
I'd be happy to do that.
There are two...
I have a question, though. You say you can replace parking requirements with bicycle parking, so how many do you get to replace?
It's really kind of up to the Planning Commission. When it gets to... When we're talking about the downtown area, it's impossible. We'd never be able to approve anything based on the parking requirements that are in the code, so there's other things in the code that allow you to modify it, and downtown is one of those areas. So what it does state in the code is if there's public parking spaces within so many feet, I think it's 300 or 500, I can't remember, but anyway, it's within so many feet of that use, then that counts as the spaces.
Yeah, we also have a lot of space in there that's good for parking bicycles that don't work for cars, so.
And I would...
Put bike racks in there or something.
Change your statement to say, "That is not a request," because if you're making a request...
Oh, yeah, yeah, suggestion. I'd like to suggest, and I'd be happy to talk to you about it further outside of the meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Excellent. Anybody else?
Great, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, then it is time that we will open the public hearing. Would anybody like to make a comment? And if not, then we will close the public hearing. So we have, again, we're going to look at the... Let's see, where did I have it? Start, okay. Okay. Staff, so we're agreeing that... Staff recommends approval of the PUD with the underlying I-1, mixed-use industrial, and specific uses within the underlying zoning of B-2 and B-1. So we have reviewed the qualifying conditions, and that was, I think, 2, 5, 7, and 8, and I think we're in agreement with staff. Is that correct? Or anybody... Okay. And then we also needed to look at the 125406, and that's page 11. And I think that we... And that was, staff recommended that, and I think we're all in agreement. Okay. So then what we need are...
You need first just to...
Yes, I'm getting mixed up with... Because we did the 1 and we did the...
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay. So, what we need to do then is our first motion. We're ready for that, Judy?
To...
Okay. Yeah. Well, the first motion should be recommending the rezoning to the PUD.
Yes.
Would somebody like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion that we rezone it to the PUD.
And I'll second it.
Great.
All right, Osterholm?
Yes.
Zaremsky?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Stiles?
Yes. Okay, and then the second motion that we need is that we are approving this plan with all the relevant conditions. And we did not have any waivers for them, so we're approving it as it is. So I will make that motion. We need a second?
I'll second it.
Great.
Scott? All right, Green?
Yes.
Zaremsky?
Yes.
Osterholm?
Yes.
Stiles?
Yes. Okay, so we have approved both PUDs, congratulations.
So this... What's going to happen now is I'll take your recommendation to council on June 5. And then, on June 27, if they approve it and let us go forward, we'll come back for the final PUD. And we're doing, we know, as you mentioned, we're going to change up our Planning Commission meeting in June because of vacations and other things that are going on, so it'll be June 27.
Okay, great.
All right.
Okay, then, I do have an old business. The last time I brought up about the inclusionary zoning. And I do have, and this isn't... This is something for you to look at, so I thought I would pass this out. One of the attorneys at Abel, Ellis Jacobs, and Michael Lodens Slager. And one of the things that was asked last time about, and I only printed out a couple of these, but the examples are in North Carolina. There are a number of states, many states, that have inclusionary zoning. Ohio, there isn't anywhere in Ohio. North Carolina, though, 2 communities. One located near Chapel Hill with a population, this community of 21... It's Carburel, North Carolina, with a population of 21,295. And then another one, Davison, North Carolina, has a population of 13,054. And they had some differences, but the issues that you look at are the project size. And so, you know, I was looking at, but it can be changed. Some of these had them as low as 2 units. I had 7 units or more of housing that it would apply. And then the set aside for affordable housing, I was recommending 15%. That's a little bit less than what the ones in North Carolina. One of them was substantially higher and the other one lower. They averaged, I think, 16%, so we were... I was suggesting 15%. And then it just has the information about income requirements, that 5% would be no higher than 50% of the area median income, and that 10% would be up to 80% of the area median income. And this talks about for sale and also for rental. And then the affordability period, we were recommending 99 years. And that the builder worked with a nonprofit, because once you... If you're actually trying to keep affordable housing, you want to have it for quite a while, because substantial money goes into making it affordable. And just as a reference, I was looking at something that Home Inc. had. The first house that they built, it has changed hands 4 times, that each of the families that bought it at the time then... it at the time then moved into market rate. And so that house, after 25 years, is still affordable. And that's because they, you know, have those restrictions, and that's really ideally what you want, that if you're making that sort of investment, you wanna be able to maintain it. So this is what it had, and then, a lot of times for developers, they look at, well, what are incentives?
So, hold it, we cannot put something like this on the agenda that has not been noticed, and that no one else has seen, it's pretty big discussion?
This is just, I'm giving this out for discussion, right now.
Well, so, it should be added to a future agenda, I don't think, because, for example, I would imagine that the Neighbors for More Neighbors Group would have wanted to be present
Sure.
For any kind of discussion like that, which is why things get noticed, but also that that should probably also go to Housing Committee, and have you gotten...
I haven't gotten anything from them.
You're, you're gonna be invited to the next meeting, which hasn't been set yet.
Yeah, well, we talked about this at the last one, so I said I would bring back something, so this is what I was bringing back, and this is just throwing out for people to look at, and for more information if they...
And I don't have that other chart, and just, do you have those?
I can give you that chart, I only made a couple copies of that chart, but I wanted to give one to over here, because you were the one who was specifically saying you didn't want something that was for... Okay.
So, if you, for, just for future reference, send it as a petition communication, and just say, following up, and that way, it gets into the packet, people see it, and then everyone sitting at the table knows, oh, Susan probably wants us to take a gander at this ahead of the meeting.
Sure.
Just do it like that, if you wanna...
So maybe for our next meeting, we can have this, to just take a look at it.
Yeah. You know, my suggestion, we run it through Housing Committee, but also... Yeah, I would suggest, yeah, let's take it through Housing Committee first, and let it go with Meg when she starts, because June 37th is gonna be, it's looking packed. I've had two potential conditions.
So when is the Housing Committee meeting, are they meeting in May?
He should be, he'll, he's gonna, he sent an email to us yesterday, saying that he was gonna set up the calendar, and he was, and the new addition to the group was you.
And, but he didn't suggest any dates?
He has not yet, so I don't know where he's at on that.
Okay.
I can ask him.
Yeah, you could push on that as well.
Yeah, so...
So then, looking at then, agenda planning, then for our next one, we have...
Oh, so, for the next one, agenda planning, we're gonna have the, the final PUD. Two, two final. So you're... Yeah, right, sorry, two final PUDs.
For the two that were here today.
Yeah.
Then weren't we having then, the housing over off of Dayton Street, wasn't that coming?
Home Inc.
The 90 houses?
32 houses for me?
No, no, no.
That's...
What's gonna happen on that is, they're gonna go ahead, and they're gonna put in the underlying infrastructure, and then when they're almost completely done with that, then they're gonna come back for the final.
Okay.
They, they submitted the final with us, and there's nothing in the code that says they have to immediately, we have to immediately do something with it. So, it's basically, we're sitting on it, and when they're ready to pull the trigger for the second final, to go to council, that's where it'll come.
Kenny Farm.
Kenny Farm, that's it.
Kenny Farm, yeah.
So, do we have...
Well, I mean, I'm sorry, let me restate that, they have to come back to you and to council for the final, but they submitted the paperwork to me, and then they told me to hold it.
So, do we have any idea, will it be this year?
Yes.
Okay.
They're hoping to start breaking ground this summer.
So they're gonna go ahead and do that before we get the final?
And then, yeah, no, they've submitted the final to me, and then I'm sitting on it, and then when they're ready to actually come before the Planning Commission, they'll say so, and then we'll do it. Because there's nothing in the code that, that says that we have to take it within 30 days to the council if, if they don't want to.
And they can go ahead and start what they're doing without having that final approval?
Yeah, that's what they're choosing to do.
Yes, okay.
So, there's some degree of risk, in theory, on their part?
I mean...
I'm not quite clear on that.
I'm not a lawyer, so I don't wanna say.
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, I guess you could say there's always risk, I don't know, but I mean, a risk on both sides, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else that we know of for next month?
I'm talking to a couple people that could be conditional use, but what's gonna happen on this, on this June 27th final, if that goes through, then in July, when you, is there, when is there gonna be a meeting again?
July.
There will be one in July?
The second week, or, or regular meeting?
So then the second Tuesday in July, some of the tenants that are gonna be doing these uses in the 144 Cliff Street will be coming.
Okay.
Because one, one's gonna be like tattoo, so that's a conditional use.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that'll be July...
Whatever, the second Tuesday.
July 11th?
Okay.
Okay, then I guess, if that's all the business we have, then we can adjourn.
Okay.
I make a motion to adjourn? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, we're adjourned.
Thanks, guys.
So the, the next meeting is...